All right, why don't we go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order? Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, all members of council are present with Brandon Lasowski. Council Lasowski present yet? Whatever one we're using. Approval of tonight's agenda, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move.
Hearing a motion to approve tonight's agenda by councilor polling, do I have a second?
Take it.
Second by councilor McHugh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other comment, is there one here tonight that would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda with the exception of Joel Haugham? No, just kidding Joel. Why don't you go ahead and step forward? Please state your name and the city you live in. The record. Stay on your bike next time.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. I'm just a little bit creaky here today for crying of crazy reason, but anyway, I have, I'm Joel Haugham and I'm an old guy from Scappus. And I just have a thought, I'm hoping that you'll entertain here as, as time goes by. And it's probably germane to a lot of things that are going on right now. So I'm just going to read a quick synopsis here. Mayor Burge and councilors, if you are not aware, the current use of FEMA's flood delineations to determine the flood risk is not realistic. Which is why thirty-one, mind you, thirty-one federal agencies are currently using risk factor modeling in their risk. Risk factor, if you don't know, was developed by forty-five top universities, nearly a hundred scientists, engineers, and just, you know, top flight operations, so that's why it's so well acclaimed. Around twenty-five percent of flood claims currently come from areas that lie outside of FEMA's hundred-year delineations, which are outdated and inaccurate according to a number, a number of studies, I referenced one. Basically, basing our building codes, building and development codes on outdated modeling is not good public policy and it will only get worse in the future. The 2022 risk fact factor flood modeling for South Scappus Creek is, for instance, substantially greater than FEMA's predictions. And you can see the, if you look at, if you got this printout, it has that depicted. As part of the fifty-year planning process, it would be prudent to zone all flood-prone areas as green space and limit new development in this zone to help mitigate future flooding. The graphic herein depicts the 2022 one-hundred-year flood modeling, which gets appreciably worse going forward. It would probably be desirable to use risk factors thirty-year projections for a realistic assessment for our collective future. The ancillary benefits would be improved creek habitat and maintaining community livability. As Scappus embarks on its next chapter in 2023, I hope council will direct staff to implement such changes to zoning and development codes for the benefit of everyone, old and new to Scappus. I thank you for listening and I hope you all have a nice Thanksgiving. Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you Joel. There anyone else that would like to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I will go ahead and move forward to the consent agenda, which is the November seventh, 2022 council work session minutes, or seventh, 2022 council, the council meeting minutes. The appointment of Commissioner Garrett as the liaison to the Parks and Rec Committee from. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Hearing a motion from councilor Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilor McHugh, any discussion?
I do. I just have a question for Alex. What is the practice for liaisons to our committees? I know we have several, like, community stakeholders that are liaisons to the Economic Development Committee. It looks as though, you know, he would be like a county stakeholder being. Can you just kind of describe the benefits of having these sort of out-of-city stakeholders being liaisons to these groups?
Well, I think as with anything, communication amongst, you know, local agencies is really beneficial in a lot of ways. So they can provide feedback to the committee on, on various items. I know that they're very involved with the CZ Trail, obviously, having, you know, owning a huge part of it. And so there's been a lot of communication back and forth about, you know, putting signage on our portion of the CZ Trail, things like that. Sometimes, you know, the county might be able to help identify funding for us or, you know, maybe, maybe they write a letter of recommendation on a grant application of ours because they're invested in, you know, seeing good things happen here with parks. So I just think there's a lot of reasons why that can be a really beneficial relationship, so.
Yeah, I'm really happy to see that he's able to join the group. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Old business ordinance number nine oh seven, ordinance renaming Commerce Drive to Northeast Commerce Drive and Aviation Court to Northeast Aviation Court. Okay, this item is under second reading. Ordinance number nine oh seven, an ordinance renaming Commerce Drive to Northeast Commerce Drive and Aviation Court to Northeast Aviation Court is now on second reading, it was moved and seconded during a previous council meeting, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance number nine oh seven, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number nine oh eight, an ordinance of the City of Scappus creating Scappus Municipal Code five point zero seven, dialo sibin service centers.
Hello.
Hello.
Very close.
All right. This item is also on second reading. Where is the resolution? All right, ordinance number nine oh eight, an ordinance of the City of Scappus creating Scappus Municipal Code five point zero seven, dialo sibin service centers. This is on second reading, it has been moved and seconded during the previous city council meeting, is there any further discussion on ordinance number nine oh eight? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. New business, contract approval for Bella Vista waterline construction, Mr. Sukow.
Yeah, mayor and council, good evening. So hopefully a fairly straightforward request, we're just seeking your approval to enter in a contract with Advanced Excavating Specialists to replace nearly a thousand feet of water main up on Bella Vista. Is a project that we were going to do in-house with our crews, but with the workload of the water meter still to go and everything else, we just want to get this done by a contractor so that we can have it done by spring, summer, because we are hoping to pave Bella Vista and several streets up there this next summer. So time is of the essence also, is a factor for us, so it's again, just seeking your approval to enter a contract with this contractor.
Thank you, do I have a motion or any questions by council? This is the area that broke, waterline we need to.
This is not broke yet, but it is outdated steel that shows evidence of failing in the future. It is at its life expectancy right now and it doesn't make sense to pave, knowing that there's a risk that we'll be digging back through the brand-new pavement to replace or repair. That's why we're trying to be proactive.
Stop with your anti-government statements. I'm kidding, you know, thinking smart and getting things done before paving is.
You'll start to see one to two of these projects a year moving. Already got another one in design as we speak.
Just a point of information, that's actually one of our quote-unquote newer, you know, it's a lot newer than some of our water lines and.
Not this particular portion. There is some newer PVC and that's what we're connecting to.
Oh.
It's this one stretch that is the steel that's original equipment, if you will.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
And is, this is all fits within budget. Only for these years.
There's five hundred thousand budgeted for water main replacement in this year's budget.
So the amount of one seventy-four, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents is that the accurate, is that lowest bid, right? And it's, that's the bottom, is that right?
We actually received three bids on it, their bid originally was, I think, two hundred and fifty-six. Negotiated with them to reduce it, Public Works will be performing a portion of the work that they would have subcontracted for the paving and a couple other items to help save the city some money. Actually, yeah, we cost saved on this.
Have you worked with Advanced Excavating Specialists LLC?
We have not, but we've done research on them and got rating reviews from other cities who have hired them.
I move that council authorize city manager reigns to enter a contract with Advanced Excavating Specialists LLC to complete the Bella Vista waterline construction project.
Hearing a motion from councilor President Bryson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilor polling, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number five, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Lex?
Yes, mayor and council, so following the last work session on the ARPA funds, we've come back before you this evening. We have included in here the items that you discussed wanting to approve, we've also kept in, on the list, the other items you all had discussed. We also had taken a suggestion from councilor Miller to set up a, an option essentially to allocate the funds kind of like you do with the Community Enhancement Program Grant, if that's how you want to go about this, just to, you know, kind of get this process completed. Or you can continue on as you have been, so this, that is just an option. And then there's just some kind of different recommendations, they're from council on certain items. And Hugh, I don't know if you want to maybe add a little bit more to that before we dive into it?
I didn't have anything to add other than that.
All right, chief, did you?
The only item that we added was temporary staffing assistance, the money for Brian Jensen's position. I will be in training for a few weeks, attend the academy in May, and right now we are down, me being the only supervisor, so we asked Brian to come back to help in my absence so that we have some type of supervisory staff there. So that request was on added.
So my, my only request is, or something for council to think about, is the first three items. Number one, if this is the way that we want to continue with this, where each counselor, you know, decides on an amount to give each one of these items that are on the list here, I would suggest that we consider removing the first three and see if council can come to an agreement on funding those entirely, because it doesn't really make sense if they're not fully funded to do them, does that, that make sense? Okay, so if we did do that, then the top number on the page there, which is six hundred and thirty-six thousand, zero, seven, seven, it reduces that to five hundred and seventy-nine thousand and seventy-seven dollars, just for reference there. And then that's, of course, going to also change ninety thousand, eight, sixty-eight, fourteen per counselor as well. So we probably first need to come to an agreement that we're going to fully fund the first three items, which for the record is the City Police Department Part-Time Evidence Technician, fifteen thousand dollars. City Police Department Field Training Officer Training Services, which is, on here is twenty thousand dollars. City Police Department Temporary Staffing Assistance, twenty-two thousand dollars.
We can, we can entertain multiple motions within this. Someone wants to move to approve those three.
Okay, mayor? I move that council approve the three items that I just mentioned on the record in the amount of fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, and twenty-two thousand, again, for Part-Time Evidence Technician, Field Training Officer Services, Temporary Staffing Assistance, in total of fifty-seven thousand dollars for the three of them.
Hearing a motion by councilor Miller, is there a second? Second by councilor Santiago. Any discussion? That motion specifically. Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next. Any other discussion on the rest of the items?
I think we just.
So instead of, for me, instead of, I would rather just know what the priorities of the council are. I mean, for me, the Oak Street Water Main Replacement seems like a necessity.
Mr. Mayor, for me personally, Oak Street Water Main is, is a necessity, the wastewater infrastructure project is a necessity. Those are my two majors, the other ones I will actually have crossed off my list, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify one thing before we move forward here on this list? So at the last council meeting, we had. Bear with me here, sorry. So for premium pay, which is the last item listed here on the new exhibit, the amount requested is now eighteen thousand, three sixty-one. At the last council meeting, there were three options that were listed and they amounted total for twenty-seven employees, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-one, fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventeen, and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine. We're now, you're now requesting eighteen thousand, three sixty-one, can somebody explain that?
Well, I think based on our discussion, maybe, maybe we got this wrong, but we thought we'd heard that, you know, might, there might be some interest in maybe five hundred dollars per employee, but that anything beyond that, there didn't seem much appetite for, so we just simply reduced it to show what it would be if you did the five hundred instead.
Okay, so does that include taxes or something, because I don't, and is that still at the twenty-seven employees?
Same number of employees, yes, and.
Thirteen thousand, five hundred.
With the payroll expenses, the five thousand?
It'd be.
Yeah, I didn't include that, that's.
Oh, okay.
Okay, there, well, is it just my, is it just a little bit less than five thousand?
The payroll expenses?
Yeah.
So I've got just, just over fifty-five hundred for payroll expenses and then thirteen thousand, just over thirteen thousand for the employees. They, if the actual, the actual bonuses.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
So the payroll expenses are just over fifty-five hundred and then the actual bonuses themselves are thirteen thousand. Total, for, and then for the twenty-seven employees.
Okay, so that's eighteen-five, on here is eighteen-three sixty-one, is eighteen-three sixty-one still accurate?
Yes, so the reason, are you asking why that amount is thirteen thousand dollars and, or thirteen thousand and thirty-eight dollars and not around twenty-seven multiplied?
Well, my first question was why it changed, because our options were thirty-six thousand, fifty-two thousand, sixty-nine thousand, now we're requesting eighteen thousand, so I just want to make sure that we're requesting the right number.
I think you brought us back a smaller amount because you're based on the feedback.
Could always change that, but that was just based on the feedback we received, we thought that a lower amount had been.
Yeah, so my, my point in bringing this up is if we're looking at these numbers up here and trying to make decisions about where we're going to allocate the, there, the numbers are confirmed and accurate, so I just, I saw discrepancy from what we talked about last time, I just wanted to confirm that that is the amount that's being asked for now, thank you.
So these, excuse me, the Oak Street Water Main Replacement and the infrastructure, so if they're fully funded, say the two fifty and the four hundred, how soon is this, I mean, is it something that will work within the timeline of this project, of you getting the funds to do this?
The water main currently has preliminary design work done, we would have to take it to, back to an engineering firm to lead the engineering and then it could go to construction within the year reasonably. The wastewater, if that's what you're asking to, we're looking to purchase that equipment here fairly soon, or at least procure the bucket down. The lead time on it is a hundred, I mean, a year, so we're looking to fund that in about a year from now. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and are you, are these numbers going to be reflected in that for next year's budget, or is this?
If, if we know that this is what it'd be, yes, it'll be shown as our revenue to the budget.
Just to piggyback off of councillor polling's, you wanted to know what our appetite was. I personally have removed the last two off of the list.
For, for the record, can we say what those two items are?
Would be premium pay for employees and the Columbia Economic Team for an advanced additive manufacturing small business incubator.
Mayor? So for me, I would agree that the Columbia Economics Team, CET line item, be removed out of the entire list.
I'm in agreement with that, also, I'd like my own understanding of how these funds are best spent. I don't, I don't think the premium play, premium pay applies to our employees and so I'd remove that from the list. That's just my own personal opinion and also the money for the economic team, I don't think that's the appropriate expenditure for this, this fund.
Hurts me to say not to fund the CET, but I do agree that the infrastructure, the projects are important in the city and it's necessary and my, it almost comes up to the whole amount, well, actually now that the number is lower, thousand, or five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, pretty much one of those projects, Public Works project.
Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, that, that we have given several hundreds of thousands of dollars to local small businesses during the pandemic and that this was just kind of a, a wish of CET and that was acknowledged publicly and it's not that we don't value small businesses. We did put a substantial amount of money into small businesses during the pandemic.
Yes, so there was the Small Business Grant Program and then you also did allocate twenty-five thousand to the Small Business Resource Center. And the director of SET did come before you and actually even stated too that he felt he could find funding elsewhere, so. Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any doubt that you support small local businesses, I just think that, you know, there are other priorities at this, at this moment.
So Lasowski? Your thoughts?
I am in support of taking the CET request off based on the, the responses from the director in which they've publicly stated that this was just more of an ask and if the funds were available, and I think that the council has identified it, they'd like to use the funds for other uses. Thank you.
Do you have any other priorities on the list?
Uh, none, none at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Mayor?
Counselor Miller.
I move that council remove the Columbia Economics Team CET request in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars from the.
Why don't we, instead of, I think we've. Just a request, we don't need to vote, motion to move the request, I think we just don't make, it doesn't sound like there's enough votes, so no one make a motion to approve the request. Let's try to focus on five seventy-nine, zero, seven, seven. Sounds like the Oak Street Water Main Replacement Project has the support.
Can I ask a follow-up question real quick though? So is there anything else on this list that would require a hundred percent funding in order for it to happen? Or are some of these, if they don't get the hundred percent fu- funding, there's other funding available to make that happen? Because if there's something on here that we can't, if we don't fully fund, it's not going to happen, I, I don't, I want to make that clear, right?
I think that's the Oak Street.
The, the number associated with Oak Street is, is our best guess estimate, if you will, like an engineer's estimate, we don't know that that's exactly what the numbers are going to come in at. I'm guessing probably they're going to be higher and that our water budget will pick up the difference. That kind of what you're looking for? We were fully prepared that we're going to have to probably add some money to it, knowing what we just are locked into up on Bella Vista, figure that out per foot, it's, it's probably going to fall a little bit short, so all of those funds will get, I'm really certain.
Perfect, I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, as a council decide that we're only going to fund a hundred and fifty thousand to it and then it doesn't, you know, the money doesn't go to what it should go to for that, you know, or it doesn't happen for that matter.
Yeah, no, that, that line is definitely a priority line, we would not, not do it at some point. This just helps us get to the forefront. The other thoughts were is this, this helps the developer looking and requesting some money, we thought this would be a win-win as a dual partnership on that, so.
So the, so then my suggestion real quick would be to go the route of allocation by counselor, by counselors for the remaining ones that are on the list.
Two things, first of all, the, the Oak Street, the water lines on, on Oak Street and. Is it the Myrtle, is that it?
Yes.
Yeah, Oak Street and Myrtle, and I asked the question last time, I think you guys gave us the information in this report. It appears that is, we're, what we're trying to do here, one of the things we're trying to do here is help out Habitat for Humanity is a good idea what you guys came up with to do that. But as I'm understanding the information you gave us, the way the funds are being spent, the way we have to spend them, you know, to, you know, someone could probably do it cheaper than we can, because we've got to do all the, the things you have to do governmentally. But if I say fifty thousand dollars for the Myrtle Street, a hundred thousand dollars for Oak Street, is that what we'd be saving Habitat? Am I correct on that?
Based on the estimate that Habitat for Humanity sent.
Could you make sure, under the microphone?
Sorry, the, based on the cost estimate, updated cost estimate from July of this summer, that Habitat sent over to me, the waterline improvement work that was pertinent to the waterline, they had estimated at about fifty-one thousand and that's items seven and eight on exhibit B. Again, I, our department built the estimate for what the full waterline costs are and the lineal foot price based on the most recent bids we got back within the last few weeks.
It's a ballpark figure though, right?
Yes, I mean, conditions could change.
They're definitely helping them out in some manner by doing this.
Correct.
Yeah, so, but we're estimating specifically on Oak Street that that could benefit them up to, didn't you put this ninety to a hundred thousand?
Yeah, so, so based on, on our estimate for the waterline lineal foot price, I mean, I know that the lineal foot price that's indicated on their estimate is about sixty dollars per lineal foot for, for engineering and construction based on the bids that we received back, we're expecting that to be far higher.
Right, so we think, we think their estimate is light, in other words.
Yeah, I, I understood that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Oh, that was just.
So if we're divvying this up by councilor, can we add new things on there? Probably not, huh?
Yeah.
What are you pitching, Pete?
In your center?
Mr. Mayor? So I guess my other thought would be, do we want to have a, just a rough vote of, so we have a majority that wants to move forward with each project? And if there is a certain project. And if there is a certain project where the majority does not want to move forward with, it's off.
Yeah, I mean, just a, it's a, just a sample public thing. I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and start down at the premium pay. How many people are in favor of, excuse me, with the premium pay? I'm in favor of keeping. Brandon?
I'm in support of the premium pay for staff that were coming into work during the COVID pandemic, yes.
Doesn't look like there's more votes for premium pay. So, and it doesn't look like the Columbia Economic Team, just based on discussion, didn't have more votes. So I'm going to just, it'll sound like they've been eliminated. So it's really the three left are the Public Works Department wastewater infrastructure projects. And this isn't the 400,000, this is, do you support putting some number towards the wastewater infrastructure? Brandon? Looks like, looks like there are four. The next item is the Oak Street Water Main Replacement. That one looks like it's got a majority. And then the other one is Habitat for Humanity, Columbia County. This isn't saying 292, this is something.
It's around 50,000. 50, see.
Looks like, are you?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, it looks like we have a majority for those three items.
Can we, just for clarity, for the record, can we state verbally what those are?
Habitat for Humanity, Affordable Housing Development, the City Public Works Department, Oak Street Water Main Replacement. And then the City's Public Works Department, the Wastewater Infrastructure Projects. Those projects are coming in over budget. Probably projects that can be funded through that instead. So it would just be.
So if, if we can just, if you look at the ARPA funds and what they were intended for, they were really intended for water, sewer and broadband as far as infrastructure, those were the things. And to kind of reset where, where we were, one of the things that, that we were instructed to look at is, is there a way that we can help Habitat for Humanity, understanding that our city does not have a qualified census tract, which is really through a lot of the guidance what they were looking for. If you had a qualified census tract, you could do all sorts of fun things with parks and, and if you didn't, you were far more limited. So there's some crossover between Habitat and Oak Street because the Oak Street will provide a benefit of, uh, probably 90 to 100,000 dollars that Habitat for Humanity won't have to pay. The other benefit is by doing that entire pipe at once, we're not going to go, it's what we have now, which is we have eight inch and then it, it drops down and then it goes back. And so the, part of the reason that, that staff kind of came up with this was because of the council's desire to help Habitat in, in something that was legally very safe, which doesn't mean that you can't, um, can't do something else and allocate all three. It's just that there's crossover between those two because Habitat is a beneficiary of Oak Street.
That they are. Can, can we, like, say it's 50 or whatever the number is, that we went to, we decided to send Habitat, can we designate it for, uh, because they're still going to have to do Myrtle, but water and sewer connections and projects within that project?
Oh, you.
Because I, I think that maintains the spirit of, of what they're trying to say.
You could, you could, you could allocate 50,000 to the Myrtle Replacement with the idea of that benefiting Habitat. And then I don't know if we have other funds that could pick that.
So we would not be building the entirety of Myrtle probably for a while. And I don't know what the timing of their needs for their connections are, so it would have to be broke off separate. So I don't know how that would play out to put it towards the project, still get them what they need.
Can we do what we did with the sidewalk projects in Southeast? Sixth, was it? Or the development was developing this portion, but there are some gaps that we gapped in. But can we take, say, we'll spend up to this amount on water connections to that project?
Some fashion, I think for their purposes, it'll have to be built. Whether we do that, good luck at doing that.
Find a way to continue to help them.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I don't know how cost effective, you know, usually the bigger the project, the cheaper the prices and different things. So I don't know that that's in the best interest, big scheme for the city. But I, I mean, I see where you're going with that and it, it could be done. And in theory, they will be building the portion necessary to serve theirs and it'll stop there on Myrtle at this point, so.
And my thought is, is that it sounds like if we're earmarking the money that we're giving to Habitat for Humanity for the water and replacement, they would have to do the sewer lines, wouldn't that meet the inherent spirit of water and sewer? I think it would be less risky than just giving them the money for earmarking.
I mean, it's certainly, if, if it was earmarked for a purpose that was specifically identified in the Treasury guidelines, then that's far safer than just handing them a check.
Just wanted to find the, I've been listening to you for way too many years.
I've been saying it for way too many years.
So I'm just trying to find a way that we reduce our risk even further.
Nobody likes the fact that I read all those Treasury regulations. That's what I hear.
You must have had a lot of sleepless nights.
It's, it was a lot of fun.
Mr. Mayor? So one suggestion would be to take 50,000 for Habitat Humanity, 250,000 to fulfill the full Oak Street, and then the remaining 279,000 to the Public Works Department for the wastewater infrastructure.
Good with that? And of course, the 50 is earmarked for the Myrtle Street Water Replacement.
Yeah. I guess I kind of have a question on that for Peter, actually. If, if they were to do that, could that money be paid directly to their contractor for that?
Yeah.
Hillside or something?
Yeah, because we're, we're giving them the money earmarking it for that part of it.
Okay, okay, sorry.
That's what we're funding.
Sorry, just to clarify, are you saying that they would, we would write the check to the contractor or to Habitat? Oh.
For the purposes of them paying their contractors, so that it's not a city project on Myrtle.
Correct, no, it's not a, right, I think not a city project. We're just saying, hey, we're helping you with this other frontage or, you know, these other public improvements you need to do.
I do have one caveat to add is, is that the, the, the condition being that all of these funds must be spent by the very end of calendar year 2026. So by the December 31st, 2026, these funds must be expended or they need to go back to the Treasury. So with that statement, do you think that any of these projects are unlikely to be finished by, or cause the expenditure of these funds? I'm not familiar enough with what, where Habitat for Humanity is at in their development process, but it's just something that.
Peter?
Right.
Is the expenditure of the funds, we give the money to Habitat, but we expended that fund? Or is it the expenditure of it?
You know, that, that's a, that's a really good question and, and the guidance isn't clear on that. That the, the goal is the money is out of our coffers and the safest thing we could do is, is have that project with the invoices that we can point to. If, if there is, if, if it does not appear that they are going to be able to complete their project before 2026, our water replacement projects are ongoing and so we can, and Dave probably has a list. I mean, we could have a alternative to spend this on, I assume, and, and get that. And if we're categorizing as waterline replacement, then whether it's on that street or another one, I don't know that that really matters.
As long as we could show that they've spent it, if the project's in progress, would that suffice?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, if they've, if they've spent the 50,000 on the waterline on Myrtle.
So if we stipulated that 50,000 to go to them for Myrtle Street, you know, those public improvements with the stipulation that it must be spent by December of 2026, even if the project wasn't finished, that as long as those funds could be demonstrated, they were spent?
Right, so if they haven't, if they haven't completed their housing, but they have completed the improvements on Myrtle, then we would be.
Is there anyone present or listening who has any comment on this line item regarding Habitat? Any feedback that we should have or clarification?
I guess I'm going to ask the question, is there any sentiment to add into the mix, the, the Community and Senior Centre? And if so, can we even do that, Peter?
We, we really struggled to find any project that met the, that met the guidelines for this program. And I, I think we were able to find some other funds in order to assist them with.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think previously is because they're under investigation and I think they're well past that now. They're proving themselves to be an honorable organization, doing things right to the best of their ability. And, uh, so it would seem to me that at this point, they could be added back into it if we were interested in doing that. Am I correct that or am I wrong?
If they have a, a qualifying project that qualifies for ARPA funds, then they could be added. They, we could have done it previously. I mean, the deal is we like really worked with them and Michael Sykes and other people to say, where is this? Is there a project that meets the program qualifications? And we revisited it every time we got new guidelines and just couldn't come. I mean, if we connected them to broadband, then yeah, we could do it. But what they, what they wanted us to do, like, uh, replace a roof, is it didn't meet the guidelines, unfortunately.
They've lost all their income during COVID, you know, they had no income during COVID. And so there, and that was one of the criteria is that if you've lost your income due to COVID, you qualify for funding.
Right, so the, the issue with that is the only income that they could document when they were audited by the, when they went through the Department of Justice audit, were the COVID-related funds that we had provided them. So those were funds that they received due to COVID. And so I thought, given that those were already COVID funds and those were the only funds they could account for, replacing them with other COVID funds was probably not something we could do because they were already from the city.
I don't think it's a question of that they didn't have revenue coming in. What we found was that because of the issues that you mentioned, is that they couldn't demonstrate revenue loss because they didn't keep any records. Everything was cash and there was no, nothing to come up with. And that was actually part of the issue the DOJ flagged was that they couldn't demonstrate revenue loss. They had no records. So that's why we put 15,000 in the budget for them and then they had the CET.
We, I appreciate that. I'm not, I mean, you know, I, I really think you guys, City's done a good job by the, by the Community and Senior Centre. I'd like to do a better job if we can. So, uh, you know, because we have these, I'd like to see some of these funds sized used for all the infrastructure and some things that are going to have direct people and organizations in our community directly too. And we've done some of that, but, uh, to me, this is an opportunity to do that. But if, Peter, you say that isn't going to work.
You can, you can spend, you can spend the money however you want. It really comes down to legal risks, so.
I understand that.
You know, what I've always said is there is substantial, we couldn't find a project. I mean, if, if there was like a water project or a broadband, there, there wasn't. And then it's like, okay, there's, given the audit, the, given the lack of any financials, you know, given that all the funds that we al- the only funds that literally could be accounted for were funds that we had given them and a lot of those were related to our original tranche. It wasn't ARPA, it was called, I can't even remember what it was called. Do you remember? The COVID relief funds. So you could give them money, it just, if we get audited and have to defend it, the fact that I said this like meeting after meeting really takes away all plausible deniability. This is, this is an instance where like public meetings laws doing exactly what it's supposed to, unfortunately, all of us. Yeah, I, I, you know, I, again, the senior centres should be commended for all that they do and have done in order to getting their affairs in order. There isn't a natural project for these funds.
They're, on Friday, they're having a dinner there and they don't have heat in the building. I don't know if everybody else got that flyer, but rest warmly, they say, because our heaters aren't working, our furnace isn't working. So still going to have the dinner. I don't know, maybe I'm just on smoke here and not doing anything. But I'd just like to see some funding go to the senior centre if we can do it. Because they're in a difficult situation right now and they're, they're better than they were by far, but they've still got a long ways to go.
Mayor? Pete, do you know of anything, you know, since we last talked about this, that would qualify, that we would be able to help them with? I think that's what the question is, is if there is anything pending that does qualify that we could help them out with.
Well, I think the only reason they don't qualify is, they do qualify, but they can't document it, you know, and.
You're talking revenue loss?
They didn't make any money last during COVID at all, so you, you, zero, zero. And so prior to that, they can't document they were making any money before that. Is that correct, Peter? That's what you're saying?
I mean, what, what I was told by the Assistant Attorney General was, congratulations. And thank you for requiring documentation. The only funds that we could readily trace were the funds that you provided because you required them to provide you with receipts. So when, and, and I think it was a 13-page letter that all of you received regarding issues that the DOJ identified as a part of their audit. So it is not, too many other events are in my memory and, and I, I feel like I'm having to grasp for exactly what all of the facts were related to the senior centre. My recollection was that that's what the AG told me, or the AG's office told me, which makes it really difficult to do replacement funds.
Okay, so other than replacement funds, Pete, is there anything else that you know of that qualify for ARPA funds off the top of your head?
I think just income replacement would, would work, you know. They don't have that many income, you know. And the reason they can't document the others is because they can't get into the computer. They don't have the password to get into the computer to look up the old budget, so they can't. That's, it's not that it wasn't documented, they've had budgets every year, you know. But because there was some hard feelings and things, they can't get in to document what those budgets were prior to COVID.
Yeah, so my understanding is the AG's office issued subpoenas for all their financials and then they're just run on. And again, I want to be really careful with what I'm saying because I'm, I'm going on, I, I'm going on memory from, I want to say over a year ago. We repeatedly asked the senior centre, because we heard loud and clear, it wasn't just you councillor, it was a lot of councillors were very sympathetic to the point of the senior centre. And they're like, is there a way to get the money? And we were like, ah, I don't know, what are your, what, what projects? What, what, given these regulations, what projects do you have that might meet with the guidelines? And there weren't any. And I think we had Michael Sykes look at it at one point. And yeah, I know it was very frustrating for everyone. It certainly was very frustrating for me because we revisited it time after time. And yet there just wasn't anything. And so what I'm telling you is, you could still allocate the money. It would just come with substantial legal risk. And we haven't gotten a request from them for ARPA funds for a while. I mean, we've gotten other requests and requests you helped with. But yeah, we haven't heard a request from them related to ARPA funds where they identified a project.
I'm very empathetic to the senior centre's needs, as I mentioned. My dad now has a full-time job there unpaid. He called me the other day and said, hey, this little volunteer gig kind of became a full-time deal. So, um, you know, granted, money goes a long way, but I think these are very overwhelmed and stressed out individuals who are trying to make this whole place just function and they're at a loss on how to deal with contractors. They're at a loss on how to deal with, um, people, how to fix things. And so I think what the senior centre really needs is people who are able and willing to help them navigate contracts with people who are coming in and trying to do work and make. people who are coming in and trying to do work and make sure they're not being taken advantage of. I think, you know, my dad's painting the interior of it, you know, demoing, so I think there's other ways that we can support them. I know financially we already have, but I think guiding them on how to handle projects is really what they need, um, not really knowing. So they, they do have three HVAC units, they were delivered, um, unfortunately, what's on the roof doesn't hold the new HVAC units, the bases are not correct, um, you know, they watched the crane drive away, they never got anything on the roof, so then, you know, you know, as someone who's helping, my dad is like, trying to navigate, how do we then do the next step? Because they're just at a loss to how to move through some of these functions. So I think if you have time, um, do what you can do to help them out, but.
So is there any way that, that he can navigate in those areas?
Throw in a couple, twenty extra hours a week. Extra pay, control salary out there.
Mayor. So with, um, the guidance of legal counsel basically saying that, you know, we, we can allocate money to them if we want to, but there's legal risk. I just want to make sure that there's not a consensus on this counsel, that we do want to open that up and take that legal risk, and just, I feel like the door's kind of open, and we need to make a decision here and close it. Is there an appetite by counsel to take the legal risk and to allocate any money to the senior center? I mean, Pete brought it up, and I think it's fair that we conclusively make a decision here. Not for me.
So I'm in favor of doing that, but. Yeah, I, I want to say, the city has been wonderful to the community and senior center, they appreciate the city so much, and, uh, it, it's just that, thinking that the ARPA, ARPA funds could be another way we could help them.
I would hope that in next year's budget, we're able to help. Yeah, I, unfortunately, I, you know, even with the Habitat, I looked for a line that went right into ARPA designated things that can be used for the water, water sewer projects within that project. So unless there's a project that I can zing it into one of the guidelines of ARPA, I'm just kind of, me, I want to find other ways. I do have to make a phone call, have an idea, I'll tell you after.
Mr. Mayor.
I understand.
Um, I, I also want to, you know, I think that any other way that we can help the senior center would be good, and any support that they can get by the community and by anybody that would like to, but, um, I think that we need to move forward with these funds, I would like to make a motion. Uh, I moved that we earmark $50,000 to the Habitat for Humanity to be used towards, uh, their waterline replacement. I also, I would ask that we earmark 250,000 to the Oak Street Water Main replacement, and then also earmark 279,000, 700, uh, 7, 279,077 dollars to the wastewater infrastructure project, um, which will be a total of 579,077, on top of the current 57,000 that we've already moved earlier.
All right, hearing a motion from Counsel Polling, do I have a second?
Second.
Hear a second from Counsel Miller, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good job, you guys.
We're out of money, finally.
Finally.
I'll make it easy for you.
All right, moving forward, resolution number 22-18, Northeast First Street Right-of-Way dedication to the city of Scappus, 20 years too late. Well, there, there's a reason why I said that.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, counsel. Tonight before you is a resolution to have the First Street Right-of-Way dedicated to the city of Scappus. Um, the issue was that Northeast First Street between East Columbia and Northeast Williams has been underutilized, undeveloped, and a substandard street. City staff have been working with Portland Western Railroad and the Oregon Department of Transportation to secure the dedication, a portion of right-of-way that currently belongs to rail, city of Scappus, allow development, and improvement of Northeast First Street and properties running on Northeast First Street, specifically there at the intersection with East Columbia. Just some analysis, um, Exhibit A shows, um, what the proposed right-of-way would accomplish. It's 36 feet, there's existing 20 feet of right-of-way there now, which doesn't give you much of a, of a lane. Currently about half of what you see paved on, on First Street is actually in, on the ODOT right-of-way. So there's not very much there, um, we wanted to stay within our current right-of-way. I mean, in, uh, I'll just, just to give you a little background, at least from my perspective, when I first came to the city, it was one of the things that, you know, you know, the city manager, Michael Sykes, had worked with counsel to look at that, had been an ongoing issue, do something, um, more beneficial to that ODOT rail property, and so that became a council goal, sort of, to do something there. Wasn't exactly what you see before you, but, um, so we've, we've been kind of chipping away at this for a while. In consideration of the right-of-way dedication, of course, ODOT has requested, um, certain things, and that, and that is that the city forego enforcement action against them for construction and maintenance of sidewalks on their, uh, ODOT rail and, uh, freeway frontage there on the East Maple and East Columbia. So, uh, improvements to upgrade sidewalks to meet ADA standards, essentially. That letter that they've requested that we sign and, and send to them is shown as Exhibit B. They helped draft those terms. Staff, staff recommends, uh, adoption of Resolution 22-18, Northeast First Street Right-of-Way dedication, and, um, and then we'll work with ODOT, obviously, to get the survey and the dedication documents needed to. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Chris. I just said 20 years, because it was approximately 20 years ago that the community club under Bill Blank received a grant, built a covered facility there under, city understood to be, uh, gentlemen's understand that we could fair use that area. Staff changed at ODOT rail, we had the grant money, and they said, hell no. And we had to return the grant, so that's why I say 20 years, because its best use is what's right here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a question here, so, um, I, I, I think the, you know, I think this is a great thing for Scappus, just because that's a visual area that is very rough, especially when it's supposed to be part of our downtown layout. I did have a question, um, what are the regulations? Because I, I noticed on here on the conceptual drawing, there's a four-foot chain link fence that's in, that's part of that conceptual drawing. What is the restrictions, regulations that we will have with the railroad? Are we required to have some sort of barrier between?
They, they haven't requested, um, these exact improvements, they, they just requested that we sign the letter, no enforcement.
So any?
ADA improvements, this, this concept could, um, could massage it a little bit, but, but essentially, it, it, it really works well with that in terms of, um, allowing future development, that they would like to see a barrier. Um, the timing of these improvements isn't, wasn't established, but I think it's in the best interest of everyone, you know, the rail and the city, that we have some kind of a, you know, barrier there at some point. We do a long portion that's in the park, Heritage Park, so it's not an uncommon feature to have.
My, my only suggestion is that we make sure that that becomes some sort of, doesn't become some sort of eyesore. And for me, chain link fence can not necessarily throw off a good, good visual, but that's just something that to think about as we go forward, but personally.
Yeah, I'd, I'd probably advocate for, uh, like a black vinyl coated fence, they kind of tend to blend into the background that way. I, I agree.
I'm not very good with dimensional graphics, I'm, I'm like, nice to see a street view kind of picture, um, so these little circles, what do those circles represent?
Circles with the little bites out of them, those are trees.
Okay, so are we saying that, um, this, uh, so obviously, from getting, pretty much what we're saying is, this is going to be the city, and we're going to beautify this part of section that is needed, I agree, I think that there is so much potential of, of commercial for businesses, and I don't think they're getting, the people that are already there, I don't think they get the benefit being right on front. Visually, as, as people are passing by Columbia, I'm sorry, Howie 30, so I'm just, uh, has the city already budgeted improvements for this?
No, this is, this is, we, we couldn't because.
Like, yes, this is.
This is the concept.
This is the concept.
This, this is a concept, and, and we didn't, because we didn't know if we were going to get the right-of-way. And, and the project that's, that's, uh, you, where you see, that's at the intersection of Columbia and First, they're essentially waiting on this to develop their parcel, because their current plan doesn't include enough parking to be able to do what they need to do. And so our code, our land use code recently changed, it allows, uh, a developer to count off-street parking as a part of their required parking. And so this would allow them to build out the building they want and have all the parking that's required by.
It, it would also allow them to build out the building that we want, versus just apartments, which would be the commercial corner, because it would give them the parking needed to be able to do that.
They, and I will add that the developer, uh, helped fund, uh, the work for the city to be able to do this exhibit and, and help us, basically, they gave me their engineer to do all these concepts, which there were a few iterations to get to this point. That was, that was nice of them.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel President.
I move that counsel adopt Resolution 22-18, Northeast First Street Right-of-Way dedication to the city of Scappus as written.
Hearing a motion by Counsel President Grayson, do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing on all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Chris.
Adventure Fest. Chris, thank you very much, long time coming.
Yes, a long time coming, I get to cross that goal off my list.
That's good.
Adventure Festival 2023, Mr. Isaac Butler.
Mayor and counsel. Um, so back before you again, Adventure Fest, um, I'd like to draw your attention to start with, to Exhibit C, that's the final cost accounting. Um, that really sets the stage for tonight's discussion. Uh, originally for Adventure Fest 2022, you would approve $90,000 as the expenditure limit, and we were able to come under budget by about $6,000. And as you can see, the total revenues, that's all the grants, all of the sponsorship money, all of the beer garden revenue, all of the vendor fee revenue. That was a total of about 28,000, so this event costs the city about $56,200. And so it's our understanding that you are interested in doing another event, um, this coming year, so 2023. Like last year, we'd need to start expending some funds now. Uh, we did not budget this, uh, last year, so we don't have a fund line for this, so again, we would be pulling from contingency. So it's kind of two things on the table, one is if you want an event next year, uh, we need to talk about what the budget looks like for that, and approving a motion to pull from contingency. The second thing would be moving forward, if you want to continue doing this event in 2024, we really need to look at putting a budget line in budget, that would require budget cuts in other areas to fund, because we don't have a fund for this yet. That kind of sets the stage. We had asked Treadway Events about their take on this, um, they felt that the event this year was a strong event, I think we can all agree, the community really enjoyed it. Also cost us $56,000. So we asked them where they think we could cut and still have a event that is very close to what we saw. And, um, in Exhibit B, you'll see their budget, some notes about the cuts. So in general, the kinds of things we're looking at are a smaller stage, a less quality sound system, um, reducing some of the rides, mechanical bowl and the ax throwing, those are about $2,500 each, um, reducing some of the power available. So through a number of these things, we're able to get the budget down to about $50,000, um, that's about as low as they're willing to stand by professionally to say this is an event, obviously it's an event that we would be willing to support. I guess at this point, does anybody have any questions about?
So, the first thing, I would like for us to make a decision on this tonight, let's move forward. And it includes being a logo, so that they can, we can immediately go out, start fundraising. The second thing I would like to find out from Treadway is, would they be willing to take on some of that sponsorship fundraising? I know, and obviously, they would get a, a premium off each sponsorship, kind of a commission, that they bring in that wasn't there last year, that they bring in. So if I go out and bring someone else and they don't get it, but if they bring it in, but they can make a little extra money on it, yet it still helps fund the event. I feel like at $20,000, 15, 16,000 of that came in over a two-day period when, uh, Christine and I started dialing for dollars. Counsel Miller was so kind to sponsor the thing, but you know, sometimes it's talking to people you know that gets them to, you know, up those first, first strings, but I think that they're out there where they can get the bigger people that we may not have the contacts to, they're, they do these event planning, they interact. Early on, like right now, if we said, yes, go forward, they could probably bring on next adventures, a much bigger sponsor than just what they did, and they were great. Uh, but, so I think that that would be, to me, if, I'd, I'd like to see Treadway commit to bringing in some of those funds, where they get a premium off of the funds they bring in, you know, the 17 or whatever, the sponsors that we had, they don't get a premium off us re-upping those, because that'll probably be done locally. But if they can get some big sponsors that we might not have the connections to, that would be great.
So on the point with the logo and the event, they're not proposing to change any of that. They, you know, the, the point was to grow this event, and whenever you change an event, you, you lose everything. You lose the name recognition, you lose people understanding what it is, and so, so there, that's not on the table. I mean, it is if you want it to be, but they don't feel like it would be a good decision to do that. And, um, as for that other thing, we can certainly talk with them about it, but I don't think that that necessarily hampers the discussion tonight.
No, I just would like, as a part of us moving forward, to have that discussion with them, to see if there's a way that they have people that can connect with. I mean, I feel like that if we'd have started earlier, we could have had this whole thing, if we'd have had everything set and going, we could have had a lot more revenue generated and sponsors, we just were, A, I was under the impression, they were doing the sponsorship fundraising, that it wasn't left up to us, so I completely disconnected there, when I found out, was able to do some. But it would be nice if they have some connections to these big sponsors, that maybe they can get them to come in with large dollars to help on the thing, and then every dollar that goes above our budget means things we can add back in. And typically, we know, when you're running a thing, you, your sponsors pay for the event, revenue generation should come off of the other activities, but your sponsor should base pay for. Revenue generation should come off of the other activities, but your sponsor should base pay for the event.
Yeah. One of the, one of the things they did suggest last year that we weren't able to implement was, um, a flat rate for a wristband to get on the rides. Um, there was a lot of kids there. They aren't talking anything crazy. They're talking, you know, $5 for the whole day, unlimited rides. You can be there 12 hours, like go forth and have fun. Um, that's a pretty easy way to do that. That was the most active part of the event. Um, I, we don't really have a count on the kids because they came and went. We had people from the run and we had people coming in the afternoon that came back. And so that's another option that we'd, we'd have to figure out some logistics on, but.
I was just gonna say, um, is, first of all, just trade, just to add on to what the mayor was saying, does, do they do that? Maybe they don't use that or do that as an, as a
I, I don't know. I can certainly talk to them and ask.
I think it's different when, when, um, when the mayor or someone in, you know, that's in a part of the community at Christine, that they call people that they know and say, hey, and or hey, but they get money. I think they'll be, it's easier.
Do that.
Yeah, I'm not saying that.
Still gonna happen.
There's this larger context that we don't necessarily have connection to. Based on their natural event, things they interact with, so they might be able to. And the problem is, is that we got so late to the ballgame, even with the, the fundraising, because we didn't get out the fundraiser until we approved the logo. And that's our fault, right here. That's our fault. We, you know, I mean, we should have directed, go out and fundraise before we get the logo, which is fine. I've done that before too, but you know, I think that seeing if they, and I'm looking at those bigger contexts that we might not have contacts to.
I have a question too. Um, I was, did the, um, is this, is Treadway working with the Economic Development Committee to, for this event or the Scapuse, uh, club?
Community Club?
Community Club?
So what we found was that most of the nonprofits are very small and folks that are in them, for the ones that are active are very tapped out in terms of their bandwidth to take on things. Because you're right, typically something like this is not ran by a city. It's ran by a small organization like Boosters or the Lions Rotary. And the city is a sponsor. So they would say, we're going to put 30,000 on the table every 40,000. Because you're right, those are more compelling voices. Those are the people who can raise the grants from organizations that want to sponsor events just in communities to, you know, bring civic life to the community. Um, that being said, um, I mean, we can definitely talk with Treadway about that. We could talk with economic development. Um, those are conversations that certainly and we did struggle with the folks that we had kind of picked out to help spread the word and, and do the fundraising last year. Um, that didn't go as well as we had hoped. So I think we'll be relooking at that.
I think is it part of their economic development committee's goals, I think, to support the Adventure Fest or the celebration? I'm, I was warned that they put that as part of their goal.
It might've been in the past for the 100-year event. I think specifically for that event, that was a goal for them that year, but I don't know that that's carried on. However, something like this would fall into the category of economic development.
Yeah.
And I think that
I think the
St. Helen's puts on of their events, including Halloween Town. Hiring someone who liked Treadway.
Citizens.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, but, and they do have citizens that work on it as well. You know, this is a new event, so we got to ramp it up. I think that just, and I know that the St. St. Helen's lady does do sponsorship fundraising for that event as well.
So I think essentially the, the model kind of from last year was that, um, you know, we hired Treadway to do, you know, most of the event planning and then used local folks who wanted to volunteer to do all the fundraising. So, um, you know, we could follow a similar model and maybe, you know, yeah, maybe you pitch to a bigger group like Economic Development or something like that for the fundraising portion, but Treadway would take care of the rest of the event planning.
I, I guess my biggest ask from Treadway would be connecting us with larger, out of town potential sponsors that might want to sponsor the next adventure, the even, you know, other larger outdoorsy REI bike that might sponsor the event somehow, if we can get to them now.
And that, that'll, we can definitely have that conversation with them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Yep. Uh, just, I, I just wanted to, you know, I think that one of the things we do need to really think about though is, is not scaling back. Uh, especially when we start an event to start out, the last thing you want to do is go backwards and make it even smaller because then you're ultimately trying to make it fail. So I'd rather gear it up and, you know, move forward with it and at least be at the same level that we were last year so that we can continue to grow it. I'd rather, I'd rather not scale anything back from it personally.
But I think that if we're able to fundraise earlier and have a group that recognized, you know, the new mayor appoints a fundraising group for this, goes out and, you know, something where, and this might've been me misunderstanding from the beginning. I really thought they were doing the fundraising for sponsorship. So that there was some confusion there. But now knowing clearly, I think we can raise a lot more money, that we can do the larger event without that, with the same cut that, that you're talking to this thing. I think we could raise that other money.
So to your point, the things that we're be supposed to be cutting, um, about 50% or more is in the marketing. So the actual physical event is going to look very, very similar. So it's a smaller stage, um, just a smaller light setup and a smaller sound setup. So you might not be able to hear it from Chapman. Looking at again, the mechanical bowl and the ax throwing, and that's pretty much the extent of what will be visible. The rest of it is on the backend, things like a copywriter for the Facebook posts, uh, extra ad budget, potentially the billboard. And we're really not sure how that played to the market. Because again, you know, a lot, most people come are local, you know, we, there's other ways we can reach them that are less expensive. You know, a citywide mailer might be a better option at, you know, $800 to $1,000 than a $1,700 billboard.
Mr. Mayor? I always like the idea, although you're trying to save money, but, um, if we just nail something down and it's always that way. It's the third weekend in August. It's the third weekend in June. And then that's the way it is, like the garlic festival and all these other, and the banner goes up and that's what it says and you use the same banner for eternity. I'm in, that's what I'm in paper of.
If you want to rename it Wings and Wheels, I have some Wings and Wheels.
Oh, yeah.
That I think belonged to the chamber, but get back to that.
Mayor? I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. Are you not?
I, I have a lot more. Go ahead and interject. Thank you. I just wanted to make some comments on some things that you're looking for tonight. So in my opinion, I would prefer it to be the first or the last date that you gave. Because I think that people leave for the summer. Um, I definitely know that the August 19th, 20th days, people are back for fall sports and things starting. So, um, August might give us something better. People are coming back, uh, for the summer and they're rooted here with soccer practice and football practice and things going on at the end of August, whereas maybe in June, people leave right away. It's also the weekend after Father's Day. So I feel like once you start getting that deep into summer, people are, are leaving more. Anything in the middle, I feel like just kind of hits a lot of vacations and people kind of step back a little bit, um, from local things and are traveling around. So that's my opinion. Um, my first choice would be that quote, third week in August. Third week, you know, but that's my thing. Um, I personally am against any sort of entry fee. I think one of the biggest things I heard this last summer was that they could come and go freely and they didn't feel pressure to say, you know, well, we have to pay $5 for you to do these rides or something, and that's just not in the budget for our family. It was something that they just didn't even have to think about. Kids could enjoy themselves. That kid area was jam-packed the whole time. I know a lot of adults that were enjoying themselves over there as well. And I just think that it would, it would complicate things and I think it would take away, um, from the event that then people would be like, but we didn't have to pay before and now we have to pay. And it was just easy to come and enjoy ourselves and not have to worry about that. So I know counselor polling doesn't want to downsize too much. Um, and I agree, but I would rather maybe cut a thing or two rather than, um, charge families, uh, a fee. So, um, I did like this last bullet point, considering using lower-cost bands and/or recorded music instead of more costly bands. I was one of the people that was there until midnight, um, listening to the Wieners. Um, we were celebrating a friend's birthday and it just became kind of a thing. Let's all meet up at this concert. So it was great. I personally don't think that it needed to go until midnight. I know a lot of people, um, were complaining about the noise. As someone who, it was soccer Saturday. I'd been up early at soccer games. I think I maybe even had a wedding or something that day. And then I went to this concert. Midnight was late, like, but I'm a fuddy-duddy. So, um, you know, we could cut the time down and maybe not pay someone as long to be there or like jam out to some old tunes that are just blared over the speakers and there doesn't need to be a live band. Maybe just someone with a spunky attitude that could kind of DJ the thing. Um, so I am in favor of that because the amount of people that were there that evening, I don't think was worth the cost. Um, there weren't a ton of people. So, um, um, some of these smaller things like removing power for non-food vendors, that seems kind of like a no-brainer. Um, downsizing the stage and lights. I think that those with the recorded music or like a smaller band or a bigger band, everybody loves the Wieners. Like it's through many generations here in Scapuse. Maybe just play for a shorter amount of time. They took several breaks, um, you know, because they did play for a longer time. So I think, um, maybe consolidating could be helpful too. Um, and I think that that's all that you were looking for. So those are my thoughts.
For Miller? Um, the only, actually I have a couple of concerns. Take that back.
Actually better alcohol, sorry.
That was worth the interruption. Thank you.
Tell me, galloping down.
Knew he'd agree with it.
Moving on. Um, so on, on the Adventure Fest logo and branding, are we, that means we're always going to have to keep this as an adventure's best theme and
Yeah. It's best if we're going to build it.
Brand. Right. So that's my point is just to make sure that we're in, you know, understanding that going forward for years and years, this is all going to have to be geared around adventure. And I don't have an opinion on this either way. I'm just bringing it up, just thinking ahead. Is, is that versatile enough to be able to give us options going forward? And if we are going to consider changing anything, now is the time because of the brand, what you're saying, the branding, the brand familiarity, the impressions, everything that goes with branding. So I just want to bring that up is that we're kind of cornering ourselves into making sure that this always fits one theme and one theme only, um, by the name and the logo. So.
I, I, my thought is that it, it opens up what outdoors area of Scapuse is about. It's kind of hailing on our tourism strength, which is going to be outdoor recreational opportunities. So that would be my answer to it. I think that it's still a great idea. I think it's, it's very, you know, like Wings and Wheels. It's always about cars and planes. You know, but it's still a community festival celebrating these things in our community that are always going to be there.
Natural.
Yeah, the natural beauty.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, I think those are great explanations and they make sense. I just want to make sure that we all understand that we are, you know, confined to the whole adventure theme and staying with that logo rather than something that's more versatile. So that, I'm completely fine with that. Um, the second thing is on, um, having Treadway do the fundraising. Is there any IRS or tax or any other considerations that we need if we give them a percentage of what they raise? That would be my only question with having them do the fundraising and it or being an arrangement where they get a percentage of.
I think that it would be, you know, I mean, already with funds that we did give them that are, their earnings, we 1099 that. W2.
Yeah.
Whatever number it is, one of those IRS taxes.
I'm not expecting to get an answer. I just a consideration that we need to make sure that we look into before we give them a kickback off of something that they raise. There was something, oh, to, uh, counselor, uh, Pauline's point about not scaling back, I agree. I think the answer is more, more effort on the front end with getting funding to make it bigger and continuing to grow something and, um, making it be a staple in our community that way than scaling back. So I, I would discourage the scaling back and have more effort in discussions about raising more money and how, what we need to do to get there. Thank you. And, and on that note, real quick, just to, you know, scaling back, I mean, just the, the amount of activities, if there's ways that we can save money, great. Like let's try to save some money, but I think that we need to make this thing grow bigger, not shrink it down. Like anytime you start an event or anytime you do something, the first year is always going to be the, the, the biggest cost, right? Because you're just trying to build that brand. So really I think just putting more effort into it and getting it started early and, you know, spending the time we need to, to, to develop it is the key. So.
So on, on that note, I tend to agree with Council President, uh, Grayson on the dates. I though, differently, having ran events the third week of August for several years. The propensity of a 90-plus days, August 19th is 20th is high. Propensity of 90-plus days, June 24th and 25th, since it's still late spring in Oregon, since, well, summer doesn't start till July 5th. Is, uh, I think is the better date and it's at the beginning of summer where these organizations like REI, uh, Next Adventure or other people that might want to be showing off adventures can say, and this is what you can do all summer versus this is all the stuff you missed this last summer.
I will say that Ju, that June 26th was the hottest day of the year, the last two years. It was over 100 degrees.
That's why, that's why I said 24th and 25th. That's why we said the 24th and 25th, not the 26th.
And it's also more likely to rain.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you make a good point though, on if we do it more towards the beginning of the spring, because that might mean that some of these sponsors have more money and haven't been tapped out for other events.
Not only that, but they, and if you're a company that does outdoor adventure type activities, having a booth or something at the beginning part side of summer is going to be more beneficial to that company and interested in sponsoring it than at the backend of the summer when everything's done. So if I'm running, say, the Scapuse Bay Hyack Center, I have, it's a much more powerful for me to sponsor an event June 24th and be a part of that event and have booths trying to sell stuff, bring it into summer than it is end of August, beginning of September going, there's some stuff you can have, but well, use it next spring. Hey, look, my kayak looks really nice in my garage right now. I'm looking for the spring, but.
One of the, one of the data points is that we were not able to get a meeting with the board for the Run With Neil yet, um, to figure out what dates they are looking at. Um, and it was our understanding that council wanted those events to tie in together. I think it was, um, big benefit to both events to have them on the same thing.
I mean, I think that's my preferred is the 24th, 25th. And I don't want to wait too long. So I also don't want to wait. We need to get on this. We need to have a date probably set tonight so that we can move forward and say, this is the date it's going to be. That way we can get sponsorships going. I don't want to spend the rest of this year and then next year's council to finally choose a date. We need to have a date so that we can start. We don't, I still think the biggest mistake we made last year was I spent too much time trying to figure out the details of the logo and everything that cut into our fundraising time. That's why I think we have a date now. We have the logo. We have everything. We just move forward. And, and prosper and.
Cute dog.
See, the dogs are in favor of it.
Um, my recommendation moving forward is that, um, we lock down June 24th, 25th or August 19th, 20th. Depending on the conversation with Run With Neil Board. I am only in favor of a date that works with them. Which one works better? I think it's much more meaningful to the community. Um, so many youth get involved and families get involved in that run. Um, and I think that if they're present on that day, they come back or they stay. Um, I know that the run usually runs are earlier because, uh, clears up the traffic on the, on the roads and whatnot. Um, but if there is a way to, to tighten up that gap between when the race ends and when quote, the, the park is open, um, I think that would be nice. Um, I'm not saying we need to make it a later run or we need to, I just, I think it would be nice if people were there and then they could just sort of stay. Um, and I don't really know how to find the balance in that of making sure the roads are clear and all that, but.
I think that we should prioritize those two dates and then say, so Run With Neil, this is our priority. We need an answer by, we need an answer.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Next council meeting.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have it. We have a meeting December 2nd. So.
Well, yeah, I mean,
Perfect.
But no, I mean, I'd rather have the motion that says our priority is this day or secondary this day, our preference. Run With Neil will connect with that. My recommendation for connecting those two, this is something we should put forward to Run With Neil people is have a breakfast for the runner. have a breakfast for the runners and their families. It happens as they get back. So included in their fee is a couple pancakes, sausage after they're done running, are back up, and then they're sitting there waiting, and then as they're sitting there.
Fire department. They got some good grills.
The fire department could do it, or Elks has done it before. We used to do it at, uh, Wings and Wheels, and it was great because it kept them around. And it kept them around that hour gap between the runs are ending and when everything else is starting.
Or does it have like a donation can?
Yeah, they get, yeah.
I mean, it's included with their thing, but if people want to.
What happened with ours is we actually had tags on the bibs. Got the tab, a beer and a, uh, beer and.
A beer and a pancake.
It was a drink, I'm so sorry. But anyways, the, the people doing the pancakes would get a tab for each pancake, and then they'd get paid based on the number of tabs out of the run fund or some funds. Usually it's the running funds because we've added the cost of the thing to cover that.
My only concern about June is that there's a very good chance it'll rain. And that can just really ruin the whole thing. Uh, so I'm more in favor of doing it in August myself, but I've just seen too many Junes where it seems to rain every day.
I not only am in favor of that, as Counselor McHugh said, due to the weather, but also I just, uh, the demographic of, of families and vacations. The, I, I think that the August nineteenth, twentieth is more people come back, sports are starting, they have to be back here, they're getting ready for back to school, teachers are going back to work that next week. Whereas at the beginning of June, it's, or the end of June, people have.
Just gives us two more months of fundraising.
You know.
Really need to get, we really need to get the date set so that the, the fundraising stuff can go out, packets can start going out to people so that it wanna, inroads and on point now. These other people that are in the community can put it into their budgets. Oh, yeah, that event's coming up. Cascade is one that you get to them early, they might sponsor. Cause it's in their budget. That's why it's so important to have that date right away. This is budget season for companies on their expenses. September, October, November.
It's clear your budget planning.
Now. That's why I said we need to.
What she need?
Well, no, he needs a motion.
During the centennial, we picked a date when the Catholic Church had their retreat. We lost a lot of people in that retreat.
You were really mad about that, yeah.
Not sure, I mean, I was talking to the person who organized it. There's a lot of people gone. They're all kind of faithful supporters of the, uh, community. So, uh, that might be another thing we keep in mind, too. And I forgot the second thing I was going to say.
I think not on August nineteenth.
I do. What do you have in mind for a two-day event? You had, it was sort of a two-day event last year, Friday and Saturday.
So, so here's the thing, when you rent the assets, right, you rent the stage, you rent the, all that stuff, that stuff didn't go away the next day. You rent those things, they stay there. Until they get picked up. So they actually got dropped off on Thursday and they didn't get picked up until Monday, and some stuff didn't even get picked up until Tuesday or Wednesday. So the, a lot of the assets are significantly hovered for a second. There are extra fees in terms of things like you have to have certain staff for the inflatables and there's a day rental on that because those do go away and there are things that will cost more. However, I do events every weekend and a lot of events are two-day events.
Saturday, Sunday, or are you thinking Friday?
Usually, usually as a vendor, put that hat on, Fridays are rough. People are still at work, people are like not wanting to go out. So if it's Friday, Saturday, it's usually in the evening and a full Saturday. If it's Saturday, Sunday, it's usually Saturday and Sunday till like four. Usually Sunday starts later.
Is it, is it accurate to say that vendors are going to be more likely to come out too for two days events? Cause I, I mean, I would think that's a better investment of their time.
Sundays.
And better ROI for them.
It's hard to find Sunday events. Two-day events for the same price are like that because it's more opportunity for them to sell things. Sometimes they get repeat customers.
Wouldn't that, uh, put the cost up for Treadways and their staff, their hours, so then?
There's some, there's, there's trade-off on those things. So, so some of it is you, you, you do spend more in some areas and then on others, if you're drawing people back, they're going to get fear or they're gonna, you know.
So I also have a quick, I, um, I have a quick question. So when you talk to, uh, Treadway and you talked about, about if they can provide the service to, uh, procure, um, vendors or sponsors, actually, sponsors, not vendors, sponsors. Would they ask them if they also do the follow-up? Cause sometimes with sponsors, they, they pay obviously the bigger amounts of money and they're going to expect they, you know, sometimes they get a table or sometimes they get whatever the perks are, right? So sometimes the, I've just, because I've done, helped out, that sometimes vendors different than sponsors, right? So would they also be behind of following up with the sponsor, collecting it, collecting all of the whatever marketing materials that they have? And then, um, a concierge kind of on the day of?
They, they do all that. So, so.
Just to clarify.
And the sponsors sign up, you know, they, they connect with them differently. They make sure they get, you know, their codes to get the free booth space. They make sure they know where they are day of. They get banners and place them. They meet them, they make sure to go say hi, make sure they get all their, you know, marketing benefits and all those things. They send the follow-up, like, thank you for sponsoring this event. That's all covered in the Treadway.
They'd be doing that for a fee versus.
No, that's covered in, that's covered in their fee. That, all that's covered in the Treadway, whatever their rate is.
Question, you were saying a percentage?
Well, no, that's, so that was, that was if they went out and did fundraising.
Right, that's where sponsorship.
Not what the, but not what the sponsors are getting. Those are just going to be built into the packages. Like if you have a five thousand dollar sponsor that they went out and got, they get ten percent, they get five hundred dollar commission on that sponsorship. That just comes out of what money goes towards the event.
There's a fee or percentage.
Yeah, that's, you're not charging the sponsor that fee. It's just coming out of five thousand.
Right, that they would take out.
Yeah, that they would.
Administration fee.
Yeah, administration fee basically of, of sponsors they got, you know, I mean, we're going to go hit all the local sponsors again.
I was just saying that it, it, just to clarify that they do that follow-up with the sponsors and then they do.
They do it with the other ones, ours as well. They're still in charge of the full sponsor. I'm just saying bringing new sponsors. If you're a sales guy, go out and bring in a new client, we're going to give them an incentive to do that. That's my opinion. I, I like incentives. I think what I'm looking for tonight, just based on what I've heard, motion, direct staff to plan Adventure Fest twenty twenty-three to be held on, I think, August nineteenth and twentieth. That seems to be the date most people like, that's the primary choice.
Can I?
For an amount not to exceed the, the amount we did last year, with again, the hope that we're going to bring in more sponsors and it's going to be a lower number. Be funded from contingency and to budget for the twenty twenty program.
Okay, I, I just, I, I mean, the only question I would have is if we set that dollar amount, if something comes back and we don't get as much funding, you know, what are, I mean, I just, right? I mean, there, obviously there's.
We budgeted ninety thousand last year and it expended.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six because of the revenues.
But could it come back to council for, for a change to that budget line item later on?
He's in.
So, well, I mean, I won't be, but, uh, whatever council's there. So I, yeah, okay. So, Mr. Mayor. I move that council direct staff to plan Adventure Festival twenty twenty-three to be held on August nineteenth and twentieth, as long as it lines up with the Run for Neil, uh, for an amount not to exceed, uh, we had. Ninety thousand dollars to be funded from, well, we put the budget amount to.
There's two. There is a, we, we need know what we're going to be having this year because we have six months to work on this or seven months to work on that. And then we also need to know if you want us to budget for this.
Yeah.
Cause we can't.
And that just says into budget for.
So ninety thousand dollars into budget for forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-six, twenty-eight is what that's written on here. And then, and to budget for the event in twenty twenty-four as well.
So I have a motion, the council direct staff to plan Adventure Fest twenty twenty-three to be held August nineteenth and twentieth, assuming Run with Neil will work that day. And to budget for an amount not to exceed ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand and forty-five thousand for the actual.
To be funded for contingency and to budget for an event for twenty twenty-four. I don't know, the forty-five thousand.
That was, that was the adjusted event.
Yeah, that was the adjusted.
So we just need the ninety thousand.
So that would be just ninety thousand and then to budget for a twenty twenty-four event. Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council President Grayson, is there any discussion?
Just to clarify, it says no less than forty-five thousand and the limit ninety thousand, right?
No, it's, the limit's ninety thousand. Yeah, because we're going to try, every sponsor we get brings down that expenditure. So, you know, ultimately it'd be great if we got ninety thousand dollars in sponsorship. But of course, only twenty thousand of the forty-some-odd thousand that we earned came from sponsorship. Some of it came from other revenue, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go forth and plan. All right. Calendar check. Our next city council meeting is Monday, December fifth with a work session at six P M. City council meeting at seven P M. On December eighth, there's a planning commission meeting at seven o'clock. Our final city council meeting for the year has been moved up to Monday, December twelfth with the work session at six o'clock, city council meeting at seven P M. December fifteenth, there's economic development committee meeting at noon, Parks and Rec meeting at six P M. City offices are closed Friday, December twenty-third, Monday, December twenty-sixth, Friday, December thirtieth for the holidays. Alex, do you have anything?
Nothing major to report. Just want to wish everyone a nice holiday and to be safe and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Same thing. I'd like to, uh, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas because unfortunately I'll be in the academy for the next two meetings. But you'll be in good hands with, uh, Brian over there. Uh, thank you for approving the funds. Um, our new recruits, uh, finished up their pre-academy. Alex will be starting the academy just around the time I'll be there. Frank is going to be at the jail for the next couple of days, learning booking procedures. And then, um, after the holiday, he'll be starting his field training. Uh, the lieutenant, I know you keep hearing about him, he did have his medical and psych. We're just waiting for the thumbs up. So hopefully he'll be here somewhere in between the next two council meetings, so you should be able to meet him. The evidence tech that we hired, Terry's doing a great job. She's digging into it. Evidence room is already being organized and I think that's going to be a real good, um, investment on our part. That's all I have.
Uh, Council Osowski. Brandon.
Maybe he can't.
I'm, thank you.
Counselor Miller.
Try this one more time. Nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Counselor Miller.
Uh, just reminder that we have the Tate Communications presentation on November twenty-ninth in St. Helens at the Merriweather Center. Josh is going to be able to walk right across the street to join us at one P M to approximately four P M. We've put a lot of effort and time into this, so I'd really appreciate it if all the council can come. Yeah, and then, uh, December first, nine-one-one has, um, announced that, uh, they are going to host their own presentations and first is going to be Tate, starting at nine-thirty or ten A M. And it's going to be at the St. Helens Library. Again, that's on December first. And then Motorola is going to be doing their presentation starting at two P M and going to, I believe it was five on December first. So I would encourage, um, all the council to attend both of those. I know the first is a really long day. And also, um, all the public, we have publicly noticed the, uh, November twenty-ninth presentation again starts at one P M at the Merriweather Center, across from, it's market fresh, right? I always, okay. Off of Columbia there, that's from Iger Schmidt Pool, too. Everybody knows where the pool's at. Sorry, Josh. Okay, man, the fire department, thank you, sir. This is going to be, end up being a multimillion-dollar bond request and probably a levy request on top of that to this community. So it's really important that everybody hears these presentations and understands the differences and what's at stake. So I can't stress enough how important it is for, um, elected officials, appointed officials, and for the community to show up and listen to what is being presented. Um, also, whatever decision is made, and that is the decision of the nine-one-one elected board, will be a fifteen-to-twenty-year decision. So the impact is extremely significant on this community. I have a question really quick. As far as our formality goes to appointments to committees, will we be notifying, will Casey get a notification from staff that he's been officially appointed as the liaison? Okay, and I know that Carol was already familiar with all this and thought it was a great idea, but also making sure that her and the Parks and Rec Committee, and then obviously Jeanette knows that it happened as the liaison too, but just making sure that there's a formal notification. I'm assuming there is one, but I just want to make sure that we had one. Thank you. And then last is just, um, happy holidays. I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
No, I mean, this is, uh, it's coming up on Thanksgiving week and we've got, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm super busy with all the holiday stuff. Being in the retail field and we got a lot of people out there that are working in the retail field. Just be extra nice to them. They're, uh, dealing with a lot of people right now, a lot of customers coming in. Some are happy, some are not. But it is the holidays, so, uh, be thankful for your family and. Joy.
I just wanted to add on the calendar that next Monday is the Watts House Christmas lighting at six P M. Santa usually arrives a little bit after that. Um, I just wanted to thank, uh, the Public Works crew for assisting with some of their light setup and decorations, um, out there on the highway. I also wanted to thank Public Works and the P U D for setting up the holiday banners that are along the light posts along the highway, too. I know that's a joint effort. I'm working with Cara, um, she had, uh, from the Parks and Rec Committee, she had said that the Parks and Rec Committee had enjoyed the letters that their graders had written with their ideas about the parks. And she felt like, um, being a bit of a deeper dive, um, with some school district, um, classrooms, um, would be beneficial to their mark, uh, parks master planning. So I'm working with her and, um, administrators and some teachers, um, in the school district, uh, to come in and ask kids questions or, um, have some sort of a, a survey to get input for the, the master plan. Um, Brian, it's nice to have you back. Thank you for filling in. We really appreciate it. Chief, you always seem to have all the ducks in a row and, um, I know that while you're away, you'll, you'll have us in a great place. So thank you for setting us up for success. Happy Thanksgiving. I'm thankful to be here with you all.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I just want to say thank you, kind of echo what everyone, all the council has said. Uh, thank you, and, uh, I, please be safe out there. There's been some, um, also watch out for your neighbors and, uh, I've been in mine, actually my street, we've had some current, um, I, you know, I don't know, the collabora-
Oh, catalytic converters.
Be stolen, um, on my street. And so a lot of my neighbors are, you know, be, just be aware, be hearing noise, just go out there. Be neighborly, be friendly, know your neighbors. Um, I know the holidays can bring out sometimes the best and the worst of, of some of us. Um, so please, uh, be, watch out for, um, your neighbors, embrace your family and your friends and a happy holiday.
Thank you. Just a, Big County Economic Team or Columbia Economic Team last meeting, one of the discussions is they're working on ways to raise revenues for operation of the organization at the. Operation of the organization at the. Small Business Development Center that's getting grant money, not the heat but local program that's getting grant money. And these are grant monies that they can't use for. But the other jobs that they're doing. So. Not going to happen between now and the end of the year, but there probably will be, one of the things on their list on ideas of fundraising was. Coming to the city and seeing if next year's. Payment from Cascade tissues could be. Given back to them to run the organization. I frowned upon it, but I'm not going to be here. So I just wanted to let staff and. Council members know that that was on the thing they're looking at, trying to increase, uh, membership as well. So there's multiple things on the front. They are doing work and there are opportunities that are going on right now. For properties around the airport that could make significant jobs. So. So they're instrumental in doing that work and working with the city to do that, so. Just to, so you're aware of that. Just found out apparently I'm emceeing at the, uh, Christmas house lighting because there's my, my notes right here.
Right.
Kind of funny that Santa called me to coordinate and I was like, well, I haven't heard anything come in and there's a note sitting right here for me.
Good job, Santa.
Santa delivered it. So I hope they see everyone there on Monday night. Have a happy Thanksgiving. Spend too much money on Black Friday. Save it for, uh, Small Business Saturday. Exactly. Have a good evening. Meeting adjourned.